All right, I'd like to call this meeting the Town Planning Plan Board's Order, the First Order of Business. The Post-Meeting Agenda. Rockledge has asked to postpone till our next meeting. They're still working on the hydrology and updating their traffic. And I'm not sure we're going to be hearing from KPH2 tonight. From KPH2 will also be continued to our next meeting.
So what was that about, Rockledge you said?
They're still working on the hydrology.
Okay, so that's not going on. Okay, and no KPH?
And the same for KPH2. They'll be pushed off to the second. I believe those are the only changes we have here. I'm not sure about Gretchen. Gretchen has suggested we have asked her. Have you all had a chance to review the Reagan meeting minutes of August 19?
Yes.
Could I have motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Correspondence and announcements? I don't have any. We just did get the New York Planning Federation Training Schedule. They're doing one at the Wallace Center in Hunters Cross. And it has some extremely interesting comments which you might be interested in. I don't know, so if you didn't receive that, I'm sure Gretchen will get you a copy.
That's too nice to know. When's the night? Is that correct?
That's a really good question.
I recall. Is it still time to...
They've still been taking registrations. I just got that today. It still has space. So they're still taking registrations. No? We have a few more minutes before our first public hearing. Does anyone else have anything which we can share?
I can't answer.
That's done. Is that still out there?
Is Grasmi here tonight?
I don't know. Is Grasmi here tonight?
Not yet.
That's why I'm saying yes.
You just went from a very full agenda to a very empty.
Yeah, it's getting shorter and shorter. This is what happens when I ask.
Oh, I didn't mean to say... No, no, I didn't mean anything by that. I didn't mean to say that you drink soup.
Well, down. Gretchen, is Grasmi ever here tonight?
They're on. Do you want people to...
No, we have two more minutes. Could I give a resolution for the second meeting notes?
The move.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. I think that brings us up to our first public hearing. Jeff Baker, 110, 142, 308, 510 approval, special use permit, wetland permit. If you'd like to share a list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Matthew Griesbrun. I'm an attorney at Freeman Howard. And I've been retained by Mr. Baker in connection with this application. Mr. Baker has given me a detailed rundown of the history of what's been going on in connection with this application since 2017. And my understanding of where we are now in police practice, if you can, Chairman, if I'm wrong, is that there has been some discussion with respect to an alternative, possible alternative location for the proposed house on the site. And I intend to address that tonight. I know that Mr. Baker has supplied some materials to the board. And I would hope that the board had a chance to review those materials. Namely, one of which is the report from Jason Tesaro Consulting LLC regarding the wetland protection buffer in the alternative site. And the other is a memorandum from Willingham Engineering and also addressing some of the concerns raised at the board at the last meeting. But I think what's very important here for this board to understand is that it's our position that this apparent site or the alternative that has been raised is really not a reasonable location for the house. It is not comparable, especially considering the fact that we have historical use of the property going back many, many years, as confirmed by the local story who happens to live across the street. And in connection with the historical use, the property's been used for decades for boating, swimming, fishing. And the driveway, if you will, that leads down to the peninsula where the house site is proposed has been in place since at least 1960. This is not something that my client put in. It is not something that my client modified. The public and neighbors have used this particular travelway for access to the lake. It has been snow plowed. In fact, there's an old ice fishing shed that still exists on the property that's at least 40 years old, which is indicative of that consistent use. And it's our position that even if the house is constructed in the other site that's been raised by this board, that that use is going to continue. There is no intent to abandon that driveway to prohibit anybody from using or accessing the lake. And by suggesting that we're going to be minimizing the impact on the lake because we're going to be moving the house up in elevation and up next to the existing cottage is just simply not true. Also, the ecological report of Jason Tesaro Consulting LLC is indicative of the fact that the alternative site is still within the 100-foot buffer. And he also addresses some of the concerns that were raised with respect to the sediment controls and the fact that in 2018, over 400 yards of material was removed from the lake and it was stored temporarily on the peninsula and then removed from site. Board didn't seem to have any problems with that. The DEC signed off on it. The Army Corps of Engineers approved it. And certainly, if there was going to be any kind of impact on this wetland or the lake, that would have caused that. Now, the fact that the DEC has already looked at our application has already proven. The ZBA has been very clear in its findings, including reiterating the findings of this particular board from... Let me get the tape correct. February 11th of 2019, in which this board notes no significant planning or environmental issues with respect to the proposed site. And the ZBA could not be clearer in its finding when it said, "Given the topography of the property, there is only one logical area along the lakefront to cite the proposed structure without significantly impacting the wetlands." That is the site as proposed by the applicant. Since 2017, it has not changed. And now, here we are, many thousands of dollars later, and all of a sudden, the position of this board has changed since the initial planning board meetings as well as its findings to the zoning board. And that's a problem. I'd also like to touch on the fact that Mr. Tesaro, Jason Tesaro, has opined that in connection with any activity with respect to the construction, that there are very detailed controls that are in place and proposed to minimize any impact on the lake and minimize any impact on the wetlands. And this consists of installing double-rowed silt fence, long-term stability with respect to improving the driveway so that the grade of the driveway can actually be raised from the material that's carefully removed from the septic location in the home site. So that will actually help with any impact from the use of the driveway accessing the shoreline. The Willingham Engineering Report is also very important, and I hope this board had a good opportunity to review that. And that report has opined that the excavation won't affect any groundwater, that silt fencing will be installed. The house has been reduced by six feet. I know Mr. Baker mentioned that last month or two months ago, I believe, to allow for additional space for construction to take place. But it also importantly allows the house to be removed a little bit further from those wetlands. And there is also space added to the northwest of the house and the garage for soils to be temporarily sorted. And any silt fencing and also the engineer has said we can have a dump truck on site to remove any sediment that needs to be removed. The ZBA has concluded after multiple site visits, as well as some of our neighbors, as Mr. Baker's neighbors have confirmed, that you can't even see this particular house from any of the neighboring properties unless you're floating out in the middle of the lake, which you're going to see everything at that point. And it also is very important to mention that, and I know this board is well aware, that the septic has been approved as well. I mean, Mr. Baker has gone above and beyond. He has spent years and thousands of dollars to make sure that this board is satisfied. And it's really unfair at the last minute that this new alternative location is brought up. It really is not an accurate alternative location. It is not. This project does not rise to a sufficient magnitude to even have this board look at a reasonable location. This is a residential structure. This is a Type 2 action. This is... We're talking about a permit. We are not talking about anything that involves coordinated review. This is a project that is permissible. This is a project that the DEC has already approved, the Army Corps of Engineers has already approved. I just personally went to the site tonight to take a look at it myself, just to get a feel for what we were looking at. And I can attest to the fact that it is significantly different. So the cottage that's on the upper part of the property, the topography is significantly different. In fact, from that particular location, you cannot even see the lake. There's peekaboo's of the lake through the trees. But we know we can't remove the trees, even though in connection with the construction, we certainly would have to remove trees. It also would block the existing driveway to the existing cottage, which is a historical cottage. We know it's not on the historical registry, but we know it's been there since the 1920s. And the driveway cannot be moved because the cottage's septic system would be impacted. So we're going to be talking about constructing a contemporary structure next to a historical cottage with a driveway that needs to be relocated so that we have people driving next to both homes, which may cause concerns for safety. While at the same time, we're still plowing and we're still accessing the driveway down to the bottom. So what are we really accomplishing? Is this really an alternative site? I really ask the board to look hard and fast at that. And we're prepared to defend that according to law. We hope that we do not have to do that. But we think we have a great argument, and we are prepared to do that. Mr. Baker, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Yes, we... Some of the...
You have one more.
Concessions that we've agreed to and we've given to the board if we were allowed to build out of proposed site. First, which was already mentioned, we would reduce the size of the home by six feet. We would put additional shrubbery between the house and the lake to screen the house. But the big item, which the board seems very concerned about the environmental issues, we are willing to grant a six acre permanent conservation easement to the Wetland Trust, a private, not-for-profit, 501(c)(3) land and wildlife conservancy. This will permanently protect the adjacent wetlands and forest buffer that surrounds the proposed site.
I'd like to just conclude with our list that we did supply the board of some differences between this alternative site and the proposed site. First being the alternative site's only 50 feet from the existing cottage that's rented out. Number two, the alternative site completely blocks the driveway to the existing cottage and garage. Number three, traffic to and from the cottage by tenants would be right next to the house. Number four, there would be no privacy. Number five, the alternative site sits on top of the hill and is subject to excessive noise and traffic from Route 308. I can personally attest to that. I heard it tonight. I went down to the peninsula. I could not hear any traffic. Number six, the clash of the architectural styles. We have a cottage versus a proposed contemporary home. The alternative site is not lakefront. Number eight, the view from the alternative site is poor compared to the proposed site. Number nine, there's a huge decrease in the value of the property when the house is not located next to the lake. Number 10, particular traffic down to the peninsula will continue, like I said before, for swimming, boating, fishing, skating, et cetera. Number 11, snow plowing to the peninsula will continue for ice fishing and skating, access to the lake. And number 12, additional tree cutting will be required to be built on the alternative site. And for these reasons and the reasons as that board said, I hereby requested the board grant Mr. Baker's application and find that this is not an alternative site and not a project of sufficient magnitude that would trigger any kind of review under that provision. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a couple of things I'd like to correct. Your reference to the planning board saying there are environmental problems, concerns, environmental... The zoning board appeals to bring to us the variance request of the guest cottage to be to front of the proposed house site, which under our zoning law, accessory structures cannot front on the street closer to the principal structure. That is the only thing we said, if not of any environmental concerns or issues, that nothing whatsoever would do with the application before us tonight in terms of deciding on the house. There's also a statement, I think I should probably read here, from Mr. Tesaro's, this is his August 25th report. "The town's alternative home site will nevertheless have comparatively less infringement of the wetland buffer than the original site." So it's really not totally accurate to say that he found it to be of no concern. It seems to me quite the contrary. Also, I think it's worth noting that the alternative site was one suggested site. Given the size of the property, there are a number of places on the property where a house could be built. So it's not strictly restricted to that. That was just one that was suggested during the site visit. I also think that if you're familiar with our Wetland Law, Chapter 120 by Tom Cole, the requirements for the planning board do always suggest alternatives, quite frankly, not to allow things such as this in the wetland buffer, period, if there are alternative sites, given the size of the property, our alternative construction sites on the property. So there are a number of different points here that we have had to deal with. We are constrained to follow in doing our review of this. "Since it was a Type 2 action under SEACER, no further environmental review is required under the state regulations." So that did not occur. The Army Corps and the DEC, their approval was for the dredging of the pond to create a swimming beach at the end of the peninsula. It was not dealing with this, and if it was, we would never have received any documentation for that. Neither DEC nor the Army Corps would have had any jurisdiction with this particular application to put in this house here. And if they did, they certainly would have contacted us. When we did our referral to different agencies, we received nothing back from Army Corps. They had an interest in this and that there was any permitting on, you know, Gulf and the other ones. So a number of inaccuracies there which I think need to be corrected so we can understand fully what this planning board is dealing with, the law that they're dealing with. It's our wetland permit law, Chapter 120, and that's what we've been looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I address your...
Sure.
So with respect to the... With respect to your first point about the sighting of the house and the ZBA just looking at the law with respect to the accessory structure, I appreciate that. However, a necessary part of that finding would be that the main home would have to be behind the accessory structure. So certainly, this board had some indication, some review, that the proposed project site would be behind the cottage. And I'm sure the ZBA application reflected that. I was not a part of that, so I'm not going to say that. But I'm sure I did, and Mr. Baker can speak to that. With respect to your second point about the opinion of the engineer, I'd ask you to read the entirety of the report and not just the...
I did.
Fine. And instead of sitting here and laboring and reading it verbatim to the public, it is part of the record. I'd ask that the entirety of the report be included in the record.
It is in the record. Anything submitted to the planning board by the applicant or by any group of interested individuals, and an application is part of the record. And that has been part of the record since it was submitted.
Great, thank you. And then with respect to your point about the not receiving any information from the DEC or the Army Corps of Engineers with respect to this current application, that's indicative that they have no objections to it. They waive any rights to object to any point that what Mr. Baker is doing is not permissible under their particular codes and regulations. And I'm well familiar with your law. And I don't see how this board can, number one, deem that a residential structure is -- and I'm just using the language from your own law -- of sufficient magnitude to even trigger the provision of the law. And I do not think by any means that this can be considered a reasonable location. Any other site on that property is not a reasonable alternative location. The ZBA has opined, "Given the topography of the property, there is only one logical area along the lakefront to the site that proposed structure without significantly impacting wetlands." It cannot be more clearly stated. Thank you.
Thank you. If any of the board has any questions, they'd like to respond or clarify or make a comment.
Well, one question I have. You had said that the access to the lake has been grandfathered in or something. But this is not about access to the lake, and nothing that we're doing is going to restrict access to the lake. Regardless of where the house is placed, access to the lake, that's a set thing, and it really had nothing to do with this application.
Right. Let me clarify. So my point is not that, you know, that I think that you're trying to restrict anybody's use of the driveway. My point is just talking about the impacts. And if the point is that there's going to be less of an impact to the wetland because we're going to be moving the house somewhere up here, that that's actually not true in terms of access at least, because people are still going to be using the driveway to access the...
But it's the location of the house that is causing the impact on the water. It's 100% within the wetland buffer.
I believe so is the alternative site as well.
But it's a much higher location and therefore, you know, much more protected from the weather than being directed on it.
But with all due respect, we have an engineer and ecological expert who would opine otherwise. So I don't know if the town has an engineer that's looked at this. But I'm not an engineer. I defer to engineers for these. Any other questions?
Can you work with the public if you speak? Yes.
First of all...
You have a microphone? I have a microphone.
Let me stand right.
Oh, a name and address. Gretchen, please, your name and address.
Okay.
You saw through my microphone. Tell us who you are.
My name is Ann Mooreing. I'm on the board of Spastka Village Members Association, and I just want to make a few points that 100% of the members do not approve of this. They don't want it to take place, the proposed site, because we're going to be able to see the house and not just floating down the lake or swimming down towards their property, but if we're sitting on the dock, we'll be able to see it. All the other homes are a setback, and I don't understand why you can't build the house and then walk down the ways to sit and enjoy the lake like the other owners do. All of our houses are not on a lakefront. And a lot of things you mentioned about the history of the property has nothing to do with building this property. So I don't know if... And I feel like you're trying to deceive us and the board with all your facts about approval from the ZBA and the DEC, and it's not true. So I just want to say that the Spastka members do not support this at all.
Can I get clarification? You said 100% don't support.
Well, I can't say...
Is that the same as 100%?
I can tell you that it's not 100% because I'm a member. Excuse me.
Okay. It is 100%. And I take that back.
But you're saying that you're all the people who do not...
Yes, many members do not support.
Okay, thank you.
While you're here, can I say something? You're Ann Mooreing. Ann Mooreing, did you receive a special permit or a wetland permit to build within the 100-foot wetland buffer at your property just a few years prior to this?
We got all the approval that we needed to build our addition, but our property is not on the lake, and we're not going to block anybody's vision or sight, so it doesn't apply. It doesn't make sense.
The question was, did you receive a permit to build within the wetland buffer for your project? That's the question. And did you receive approval from this board?
We did, then. I don't think the circumstances are the same, so we can't compare.
Was your project 100% inside the buffer or just partly infringing on it?
Was our what? Well, I don't think this has anything to do with...
Yes, it doesn't. It's the main people who are doing different projects. It's the impact on the wetland that is the key point that's important. And the planning board works with different residents on different projects. It's not exactly what they perceived impact was going to be, the potential downside of what is being proposed. That's the basis on which the decisions are made. They're not all the same. The circumstances are different. Just as the circumstances for the dredging and the creation of a sandy beach is different than the putting a permanent structure on that peninsula.
Right.
They're not the same.
We did not disrupt the wetlands at all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? John, is there anything you'd like to say?
No.
Any more if you have any more? Could I have motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. What you have before you, we have sent you, and we have copies for anyone else who's interested, is a finding statement based upon the discussions we've had in previous meetings and the information we received dealing with this application. Joint effort, I worked with John Lyons, Jim Garrison, and Jim, our friend, to put this together to try and summarize the things that we've said, the concerns we've had, and how it fits into our zoning law, and how we're required to basically respond to the information we had given the constraints of our wetland permit. Does anyone have any questions about the finding statement? I'm sorry I didn't get to you sooner, but I wanted to make sure it was as complete as possible. Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the finding statement?
So move.
Could I have a second? I'll poll the board. Karen?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And there are copies here if you'd like to have them. The next order of business is the resolution of approval for Mr. Baker's project for Chinatown. "The town of Primeb County, which is a high access clause in the application by Jeff Baker for site plan approval, special use permit and wetland permit in Town Code 125, such as... 127-2, 125-6-5, and Chapter 120, Section 124, exceptively at 1010, 1040, 14, Route 308, in the RC 520 South District. Referred to the proposed actions as Type 2 C for action, for which coordinated dry ground quality reviews concluded. Based upon review of submitted information, including reports from the planning board members and C O D. numbers on the site, this is the project property, finds the proposal is consistently the objective stated in check in 125 and 120. With respect to the application for wetlands permit, finds the proposed work intended to be consistent with requirement of wetland permits set forth in Towns of 120, 125, and 126. Granted, requested wetland permit condition applies here as special use permit and site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for special use permit to authorize work, finds the proposed work intended to be consistent with general standards for special use permits set forth in Towns of Chapter 125, Section 125-6-7. Granted, requested special use permit condition applies here as site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finds the proposed work intended to be consistent with Towns of Chapter 125. Approves the application inclusive of the application materials and plan sheet that had its Willingham, 812, 318, with the most recent revision date, 5/23/19, and sanitary disposal plan sheet, 9/4/19, with the most recent revision date, 9/14/19. Requested the application providing example of the proposed code of reply expected by the client to stamp and sign as referenced below. Authorize the planning board share to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the application's satisfaction below conditions within 600 minutes of the adoption of this resolution. Submission, the above cited site plan informed numbers specified in the Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 125-7-8, except as being modified or lesser number by the chair, consideration of file and distribution requirements, including now-honored card stamps, seals, and certifications. Paying any outstanding fees and the reimbursable amounts due to town and Pineback related to review and processing of the application subject to this resolution. You see, of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any of the town, county, state, or other agency is required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
A second.
Sorry, it's here.
All right. A yes vote is to approve the application, and a no vote is to deny the application. I'll poll the board. Eric?
No vote is denied?
Is to deny the application. Sharon?
No.
Melody?
No.
Erica?
No.
Woody?
No.
And I vote no as well. Tonight, Edna is absent, and therefore, it is 6 no and 1 absent. So at this point, the application is denied. At this point in time, if you would like to consider an approval of the site in the property, the one that was suggested of the site, it is obviously not the only site that could be built, could be built. You would certainly undertake another application. But at this point, I believe, as far as the town pages concerned, we are done. Okay, our next public hearing, Ms. Sura, Forest Avenue Drive, second-hand special use permit and weapons permit.
Hello.
Hello.
I know we don't have everything that we need today to work with this, but my whole reason of being here for the homework is to make sure, once we do get the delineation of the property, that we have a good shot of proceeding in a positive manner. I don't want to waste any more of the time's money with more drawings, engineer reports, unless we know that there's going to potentially be a positive outcome.
John, you do realize that the site plan you provided us with was for an earlier application, but an addition on the house, and then the pool was drawn in on that, and the site was in place. It was quite obvious that the addition, which is on the house, was not in the site plan submitted to us, and this application comes before us. So errors such as that make it very difficult for us to proceed.
All right, well, we knew that at our pre-meeting date when I met with you in the office in the basement.
Well, I have to admit that I had not been out to the site, and I did not realize, because I was not on the planning board at that time, that there was actually an addition. That was actually a basis for an addition application for the planning board in 2015 that was approved, so it was now an addition on that house, which a member of our board in the site was, looked at the house, looked at the site plan, and realized that there was something missed.
Okay, I just don't understand what that has to do with the thing. You did try, I have to say this, and we did contact the town, and you guys essentially don't have anything on file that depict the structure being built.
But I assume it has been built.
That's correct.
Well, it's your responsibility to show us exactly what the site contains.
Well, we had that conversation when we first met, and it was, this is the plan that we have, the survey that we have. We knew additions were made. We knew that work was done there. We knew that the contractor before us had to get permits, and it was basically, we're allowing us to work with what we have to put a pool in the backyard.
Okay, well
Now you're asking me to get a new survey.
I'm asking you to get a site plan that shows exactly what's on the site.
Okay, well, that's kind of a problem. That's easy now.
And that's, that would be very helpful. You do need that.
Okay, it doesn't cause, it doesn't affect my project whatsoever, honestly, but I can get you whatever you need.
I just want to bring up the issue of the, you would, Sharon, you're going to look into the setback requirements from a stream. Is it different than a wetland setback?
It gets the same. Our law requires, it's a 100-foot setback. You can work within, if you get a permit to work within the stream, you can. But our law does require the maintenance of a 25-foot natural buffer along the carrying area of the stream.
And the pool as situated doesn't meet that 25-foot setback, or does?
The pool as situated meets a 20-foot setback from, as a buffer which is indicated on the drawing.
Okay.
Existing 20-foot wide drainage basin, which is on the survey that we had from 2012.
And the height difference between the stream and the pool level is going to be approximately what?
Approximately 15 inches.
15 inches?
15 inches.
And that floods on a yearly basis?
I haven't seen it personally. I don't know the extent of flood.
That's what, that's how we've been informed, is that it does.
Right.
And so that concerns me, that there's, it seems almost inevitable that we're going to get mingling of pool water and stream water at some point during the year. It seems like a bad situation to me.
And I do have a comment here that was sent in to us from the neighbor, Jenny Pritchard. This concern I have on this proposed pool is the closeness to their stream and how excavating from the pool will affect the stream as it continues through our property, which is next door to the west of their house.
Well, our engineer drawing right here shows all measures that we take in to prevent that. So we excavate near lakes, near ponds, near everything, and we take preventive measures so that we do not cause damage onto those ecosystems.
Well, I think at this point, we need to get a proper site plan. You're talking about bringing in great deal of material as well. Are you not trying
I'm not really discussing, I don't think that's the point of the conversation right now. I think the point of the conversation is, with the setback that's required from you, what we're proposing, is it worth our time to continue? If I'm going to resurvey the property to get a sufficient site plan for you, which is being asked almost a year after we first met, if I'm going to get delineation of the wetlands, which in my opinion should be on file with the town, if I'm going to spend the money, my client's money, to do these things, to put in a swimming pool, what's the shot of us actually being able to put in a swimming pool? Because I'm not going to drop thousands of dollars of somebody else's money to be declined.
Well, first of all, when we first met, as I said, I was not on the planning board with an addition on it. So when I looked at the site plan, and I had no way of knowing that there was an addition on that house, it was not shown on the site plan.
What does the addition have to do with what we're discussing right now? The addition is on the side lot of the property.
True.
So how is it impacting my proposal?
What else might not be on that site plan? An addition, with the lack of entire building being put on the site?
I understand that. I'm not trying to put you in a spot, but I'm just trying to talk to the board, you know, homeowner of this community, to homeowners in the community, and say, hey, if we're going to continue forward, you can say, listen, there's not a good chance that we're going to get this. Walk away.
Why don't you say that until I actually have the accurate information to show? I don't have the whole reason to say that.
Okay, I don't know if Sharon or Eric can attest to the conversation that we're having, but I think the only thing that you're asking for that cannot be seen, that the only difference between this plan and the property is a side yard addition, which counts.
Which needs to be, when used, written documents to us, they have to be accurate during the date it's placed on them. You also have a
I agree.
Stamp on there of a licensed engineer. I don't completely appreciate knowing that something is being submitted to us, which is not accurate, given the basis of this original document. And the other thing I think we need to see is make sure that we have, because we talked about doing some regrading, which is part of this project, part of where a pool is, is to ensure that if this pool is put in, the ground running is stabilized, it doesn't go into the stream, it doesn't go near neighbors' property, and we will not do that once the project is approved.
Right, and that's why you have a mitigation plan attached to.
We have a mitigation plan. Also, what we need is to see, I think, the grade there is very difficult. I've been told that it does drop off down to the stream. We're going to have to do some regrading to place this pool there, because that's a very wet area.
Right, which we discussed.
As we discussed, I'd like to see it.
In early meetings.
We need to see that on the map, exactly what the grade is, so that we know what you're working with. Right now, I can't tell from looking at that exactly how dropped the drop is down to the stream, exactly how
When will you be able to make a site visit?
A site visit was made with an inaccurate site plan.
Okay.
Once you get me an accurate site plan, and the information that we require, read Article 7 of our zoning law. It goes through the wholeness of things that pertain to a proper included site plan for the planning board to do its work and to move forward. Once we have that, we can schedule another site visit and go over those concerns with you. And I'd be happy to do that. But I'm not going to do it though I have an accurate site plan, making exactly what's on the site.
Michael, have you referred this to Mr. Kowski?
I have not yet because it wasn't accurate. I gave you a lot of, I gave you a lot of waste and the client's time and money.
Well, honestly, Michael, I mean, I don't mean to be rude, but I've been speaking with the board and with yourself for almost a year now. I feel it is a waste of time because we've been working on the same plans. We have a site visit three days before this meeting, after being in contact with each other. Sorry that the side yard addition is not on the site plan. My fault, I agree. That's not the point of me being here tonight. I would have walked away from this and not shown up. My reason for being here tonight is to understand the setbacks for the swimming pool that we're putting in. It has nothing to do with the plan being accurate or not. It has to do with the stream and the setbacks.
Exactly. The setbacks are what require you to get approval of wetland permits, because you're going to be working within the setback area.
So we have a 25-foot setback from the pool to the stream, is that correct?
On the stream, there's a 25-foot setback, this is kept natural, you know, in practice. There's actually a 100-foot setback from the stream, so that's why you're coming here to get a permit to do this, because you want to work within an area that is a regulated area. If there was no streaming back there, if it was just an open field, you wouldn't be talking to us, you'd be getting the building permit. So that's why you're here.
I totally understand that. I, that's, this is the conversation I want to have. I don't know how the conversation about the site plan or the addition on the side yard. I want to have the conversation about, are swimming pools going into the backyard? Is it plausible or is it not plausible?
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
If the pool were oriented in the 90 degrees to where it is, how much setback would be attainable at that point?
Well, it's a 15 by 30 pool, so we would gain probably 10 feet. So we'd be looking at 30 feet from the center of the stream.
So you could, you could, by turning the pool, you could match it to 30-foot setback from the start.
Correct.
May I suggest submit two site plans? One, what you're showing here of the pool, and the other, what Eric suggested, 90 degrees. What we have is, we'll come up with a site and we'll take a look, and we'll go over what looks like the best way. What you're applying for is a permit to allow you to use in a regulated area.
Absolutely.
So it's not that it's a regulator and you can't do it, you just need to get a permit. We need to make sure that the requirements in the law, that need to be met to warrant issuing of a permit, willing to be met, so that we can issue the permits, we can put in the pool.
I completely understand and respect that.
Good.
Well, I just, I don't mean to be fresh, Michael, I just want to, I know that the site plan is missing things. I know that we don't have anything on file that shows the addition that was built a few years back. We're trying to work with what we have, but our real conversation is, what is the stream? How do we work with the stream?
Exactly. And if you can get two site plans showing what Eric suggested plus what you have here, we'll schedule a site that we'll come up and take a look and see exactly what steps need to be taken. So this, I can't tell you right now, yeah, you're going to get the permit, because, but I'm more than willing to come up and take a look and go over it with you and see what steps need to be taken, so that we can, you know.
Great. So we'll have a delineation on both new lawn drawings. We'll also have the addition on both drawings, and we'll have two drawings, one oriented this way, one oriented 90 degrees.
And Eric, have a look.
Can we please have a big site plan for the addition grounds?
So, and humor is always welcome. I agree. So I'll just wait on you, and once we have that, we'll schedule a site visit as soon as we can, so I'll be out there and we'll come and look at that, see if we can have something happen.
All right, you have your vice for almost at seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, what, what, what question wants you to say?
Oh, hey, hey, yeah. Marty, Boston Transit. This is all the paperwork.
Is anyone here from the asking here? Okay, well, we're going to go on to, we can review this now. These are new applications, which I think you can have deal with. And the first, hello? Yes, I spoke. Okay, the first one is Stephanie Cuffter, 73, strong, the site plan approval. We'll have to get up there. This is a common thing with what to do, and what you're basically doing is, I want to ask you whether we can accept your application, which you go through the process.
Yeah, and I'm not Stephanie, because I'm Gerald.
I was doing that.
And we would like to build a 530 square foot addition to an accessory dwelling on Alaman. There is a small house there, actually an apartment on top of a three-car garage, and my son lives there with his wife and a baby, and they are just running out of room. We have gone to the zoning board, and we have not gotten the approval yet. It is contingent upon the height of the building, and we had to measure it, but it turns out we are within the limit of 20 feet, so we expect to get the approval on this Wednesday. And the reason for it requiring a site plan approval as well is that there's an adjacent historic property, a Mansa Kenning property.
Do you have the, for the, I mean, if you can make a connection? I know that Mr. Cuffter, please, please add a motion.
So this is essentially the existing property, the existing house, and we would like to add this. Now, this, we worked with Chris Lipstone, who is our neighbor, who resides at Mansa Kenning, who was worried about the light that he could see from these windows to the south and to the west of us. And so we decided to extend the roof down so there would not be any visual impact. He wouldn't see the lights now. In the, the lights are, will only be visible in the winter time when there's red, less foliage on the trees. Right now, there is no visual.
Is there any channel lighting, like a, there's going to be a channel lighting?
Yes. But there's also, I mean, we have also, we have plans, so there is going to be a light outside too, but it will be shielded and shine down, so we have talked about this.
It's already existing two-story structure?
Yes.
So it's just that a little bit that's above the existing roof line, that's
Yes, it's, it's going to be two feet higher, but still, what was the number?
18.
18 feet.
18.25, I think. I'll take it.
Well, that's not our issue, it's just, that's, but the zoning
It's the zoning board.
Can you mention that?
No. Oh, yeah, I would very much like for you to come and see it, because it's, these drawings are one thing, but seeing it and how it would impact our neighbors, I think that would be very helpful.
Any further questions from the planning board at this point? Okay, the resolution, these are original dates. The town of Pineback Planning Board, verified as follows, on the application by Stephanie Cuffter for site plan approval from the Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 125-72, construction of an addition to an existing apartment in the RC 520 South District. Only accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review of the planning board, its advisors, and the public. Classifieds to the proposed actions, Type 2 under C group, with four individual project for which warned environmental quality was prohibited. Scheduled a public hearing on
October 21st at 6:35.
At 6:35, and directs the court to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting their own course requirements that go from the town, under town code chapter 125, section 1272. We'll talk to Gretchen about doing the, about the noticing. Who would like to go out and see the property?
I'll go ahead.
Would you, Melody?
We will have donuts.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Oh, it's very private.
The whole board can't go because of open meetings.
As long as we don't talk about it.
Wait a minute.
We'll be starting out places.
We're not going to talk about it. Okay. In accordance with town code chapter 9, conservation advisory board refers to the application to the conservation advisory board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with town code chapter 118, water plant consistency review refers to the application to the water plant, providing for review and written comment concerning consistency of the LWRP. In accordance with the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, 239, planning design referral refers to the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review, authorized without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented in a public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral corporation of working draft with approval for a planning board's consideration on October 21st, or as maybe later timely. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
So those elevations, they're not more than that, are they?
They may not be. But we do have them. But I've seen them.
There's some, you can get copies.
So what you guys want to do is get in touch with Gretchen about doing the noticing, and if you can give your information to, maybe to Melody, just how to get in touch with you, they will schedule the site visit, because I can come out and take a look.
Okay.
Is it the same mail on the elevation?
It was this morning on the...
Is it gs cuffner@hotmail.com?
Yes. And what were you missing in your plans?
The elevation.
Oh, yeah. We can give you another copy.
Okay, that would be great.
Can you help everyone?
Sorry, it's definitely not right. Sure. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is, those of the, Long Dock Road site plan, approval and certification permit.
Can I get a one? Can I take you, this is my right jump from...
And what is it you'd like to do?
We'd like to install a, an in-ground pool.
Yes?
That's it. See, we live on 5 Long Dock Road, and we'd like to install a pool. There you go. With a surrounding fence. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
But the, what's noticeable about that is Long Dock Road, I expect to have some steep elevations, and that shows flatness. Do we have contours of this property?
Yeah, the contours, this is a, it comes slightly down here, and then it's flat here, and then it, and then it contours down towards, towards the, towards the, the water treatment plant. And there's three consecutive ponds there, along down the village, and a Rhine Back, and then that CSX that owns the...
So that's on a fairly flat portion of the...
That is on a flat portion there, yes.
It's possible if you could get a little topo information on the map, because that's normally what we do require, just to show exactly, you know...
Yeah.
I think five, five-foot topo, is that good enough, you think? If you hold that?
Yeah. You know, I think, I think the site visit is like huge. I mean, it goes right to the full plan. It's one, you know, 100 words, 10,000 words is what we want to look. You know, it's pretty, you know, so...
It just helps us, because then we have it documented. So if anyone comes and asks questions, what they want you to do, we do it. We can tell them what we were doing and why. That's all.
Yeah, we can add some typography lines in there.
That would be helpful.
Okay, great.
And is that, is the whole property shown there? How many acres is this?
It's 1.2, I think it's 2.9 acres. It does show the entire property.
And, and it's, so the part that's, it's not completely flat there, but you'll grade off at the edge of the pool and...
Yeah, I think, you know, nothing more than normal, you know, slight, you know, slight, slight amendments to the soil to make sure that, you know, but it is, it's already a flat piece of land there. And we're just going to keep it simple. We're going to do your standard four-foot-high aluminum, non-clamable. You know, really, it's going to be a simple design. We're just going to do a three-foot, standard, bluestone coping around the pool, and then the rest is just going to be grasslands. You know, we like that look. It's a classic look. We're trying to keep it contemporary with the house. You know, I think, I think that would, you know, keep within that, that boundary, but, you know, that's pretty much it, you know, hole, hole in the ground and, you know, the fencing and the...
No wetlands on the property?
Nothing. No wetlands on the property, you know. It's, come, come and visit. Come by, you know, and see. We'll show you around.
Donuts? We're talking donuts?
Maybe some grapes, you know, some French things, you know. Definitely. Breakfast will be, you know...
We don't trade donuts from...
Will be delicious, I promise. But...
Does this look at 1,000 feet of the river?
Yes, definitely. It's, we're far from the river down there.
And there's also, should be an addana state. Addana state.
Yeah, there is, of course, a farm next to us over here, Creed Ankeny, but, but it's, it's one property over. We have in between us Keith and Rowena, who have, I think, like, eight acres there. So we're far from them.
At least, at least they're 500 feet of Creed Ankeny.
We are.
So what you need is the Daggie State, and you can get it through the form online, and it's just you're filling out, it's basically a recognition that your property is within 500 feet of agricultural operations, so that, you know, you're smelling, you know, Michael Tough, you know, is that...
Super, super, yeah. We love that part of the aspect of it.
Any more questions?
Is there not?
Yes, Jim.
No, we're not the stone, the stonehouse. Yeah, no problem. So, can they pan out at all? Yeah, so, we're right here. This is Long Dock Road here that, that does that, that pull around. And then Keith or Rowena is it here. And then this would go down, I don't think this is, you know, yeah, this is it. And then this would go down too. The Rosenbergs are down here.
Right.
And then what used to be the Scripps House, which is now the...
I thought for years you lived in that stonehouse.
No, no, we, yeah, so, of course, is the Kipps House. The Kipps Tavern is what she's referring to, of course, but that is a, that's a great growing. We're the one with the long, the long stone wall from...
Just one minor comment. If you can add to the plans, we've been asking this, just to note that the four-foot fence is consistent or complies with that, the old New York State codes related to pools. And the same thing with the cover. Just make sure you have some notes on there that say the pool cover and the fence are consistent with what's needed to, you know, the New York State coding codes regarding fencing and covers for safety and...
Do you want that included in the...
On the plans.
On the plans, okay. And we did that earlier. Who did our, who did our, Scott Dodden, he did include on the first one. We'll, we'll make sure we're consistent on that.
It's good to have it all in one place, just keep it consistent.
Adam Spence threw in that, so...
I know we have the fence detail.
Good people.
Also, are you planning any lighting for that area?
We, we do. It's duly noted on the plans, too. If you'll look in the contrast, we're going to have low shield, you know, just little lights, just to keep safety features, you know. And probably on the front of the shed, we're going to put, you know, a down-facing light. More of the gooseneck with the classic design of that, that house. But that's, you know, that's, we don't have much on it.
The lights are straight down. They're pretty cut off. I think they're consistent with the code.
They were the ones on the bistro when we took those down for the construction, so they're, you know, code for the town.
I like the resolution. All right. The town of Ryland Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Judge Andrew Lee for substantial improvement, especially for the county chapter 125, section 12572 and 12569. For construction of a pool, a wide and flat pool within the R1, residential, E, density, RCO, and the local zoning district. Accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review by the planning board and its advisors and the public. Classifieds the proposed actions as type 2 under secret for which warned environmental quality was prohibited. Scheduled a public hearing for the application for October...
21st at 6:40.
21st at 6, wait a minute, 6:40, October 4th. Okay. And directs group to undertake or otherwise cause noticing and posting their off. Okay, delegates, planning board members?
I'll go.
Sharon? Melody?
Should.
I think they both look awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll talk later.
To conduct the field visit, the project site report for observations for planning and public hearing. In accordance with town code chapter 9, conservation advisory board, refers the application to conservation advisory board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with town code chapter 118, water plant consistency review, refers the application to the water plant advisory committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, 239, planning design referral, refers the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review, authorized without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on the above cited field visit and for a preparation of working draft of approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on October 21st, or as maybe later timely. Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You want to talk to Gretchen about the noticing, and Sharon and Melody, who are the ones to schedule a review to come onto the site visit?
Great, wonderful. We'll have, and we'll be in contact with you.
I'll send you everything you have to do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
We have one more thing tonight, and it's a little bit of a hybrid. A gentleman has applied to us to move his fitness center in Aster Square. I don't think so. I don't, it didn't happen. From the second floor to the first floor. Not making any other changes, anything like that. It's baked by girlfriend, Francesca's was, that restaurant, back in there. So in discussing with him, he didn't really see the reason, and he did submit a site plan that shows Aster Square, the parking and all that, the lighting and everything, nothing's changing. So discussing it with Jim and with Melody, we came to the conclusion that it really didn't seem necessary to force him to do a public hearing on this, to do referrals, do a good number of the other items, and I think that we'd like to see our zoning board maybe curb issues like this, so that people don't have to go through a long process. But anyway, let me review, I have to adapt the pool resolution and see if you're comfortable with this. Well, why is it your person that got the question?
It's a little different.
Yeah.
They have the rationale.
Yeah. The town of Ryland Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by the environment therapist for site plan approval, discussed use for the town code chapter 125, respect at 67979, within the CBS Community Business South zoning district. Classifieds the action as type 2 under secret for which warned environmental quality was prohibited. Based upon review of submitted information, finds the proposed work consistently objective stated in chapter 125. Upon approval of the planning board, the 60th of September approves the application as submitted and thereby waives their client for full submission for a public hearing for section 12577 and an associated site visit as the activities agreed by the planning board to be minded as permitted by section 125-77H. With respect to the application for special use for authorized work, finds the proposed work and intended use consistent with the general standards for special use permit set forth in the town code chapter 125-67. Granted, it requested special use for conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, finds the proposed work and intended use consistent, the town code chapter 125-72 approves the application. Finds the applicant's proposal to utilize existing space in Aster Square previously applied by Francesca's, period over an existing private gym already located in Aster Square, later in different space will create no new impact. The property is located in the Community Business South zoning district, and the use is considered for personal services, business, or use, and is permitted by the site plan in discussion experiment, reviewed by site plan in discussion experiment. The applicant's proposal to undertake only minor modifications to the interior of the building already has an existing business on the property, unless it's not creating renewed use on the site and is not creating visible or physical changes to the property or landscape. As such, no new impacts are anticipated to be created on the property to adjacent properties or vehicular flow on the ground. Authorizes the planning board to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the application satisfaction for low conditions over four hundred and six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified in town code chapter 125, except as being modified to lesser than other by the chair of consideration of property distribution requirements. Painted many outstanding fees and reversible amounts due to the town plan that may be reviewed and processed in those applications subject to this resolution. See, of all thingless authorization certifications required herein, or from any other town, county, state, other agency may require to undertake with proposed actions. Anyone have any questions?
I'm just, I'm sorry.
No, good.
Under 5B, I couldn't even just reading this, but you say private gym? That, it's not for personal use. It is a public...
It's a public gym.
It's a public.
Okay, it should say public.
So, I mean, it is a, a membership, but it, but it's not private.
No, it's a public. It's not a personal. It's not, it's not a membership, it's a commercial use. It's a commercial use. Karen?
We're, we're not getting Francesca's back, is what you're saying?
No, we're not.
That's a shame.
I love him.
But there's no, no reason to vote against this. I think it's a good idea to just let do this.
Well, there's no cha, I mean, the things that we would be looking at normally would be parking, signage, lighting.
There's nothing, there's nothing changing.
That thing has been totally built out.
It's inside the walls anyway, and we're not, we're concerned about outside the walls. What happens inside the walls is frankly none of our business.
Well, and he's not, the other thing is, he's not, he's not adding showers or a new bathroom or making any physical changes like that that, that change the consumption of water or anything. So it just doesn't make sense.
Any chance we get to, to reduce the bureaucracy, I think it's a very good opportunity to take it.
It's just the intent.
And that remark, I will hold the board. Eric?
Which, which says aye, which says nay?
You're going to say yes, and then he can do it.
I like emotion, and, oh, the motion.
The motion.
I, so moved.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Yeah. And I will go aye. So we will inform him that he is good to move, and he just needs, I get it, the building perfect, and maybe the script and stuff like that.
Pick a name.
All right. Well, that's all I got. Gretchen?
You have to reschedule the public hearings for Rockledge, KPH2, Grassmere, and we didn't do Mansor.
Okay.
But there was nobody here for it, so I don't know if that...
Well, Mansor.
Mansor, he was... He was here, the pool, that way.
But we didn't continue. We didn't.
We didn't continue. Okay. Well, shall we, what do we have open?
Well, he was asking if it's worthwhile, and he hasn't made the determination yet.
You're right.
We still have to continue.
Why do we continue to the 21st?
That's what I, I have the 21st at 6:50.
Okay. Can I motion to so continue Mansor till the 21st is expected?
So...
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Um, terms of Rockledge, I think we already have them in October, don't we?
He sent us the email. Do we have to do a motion?
Uh, let's do a motion.
For October 7th at 7:00?
Okay, to continue the public hearing for Rockledge. Could I motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
And KPH2?
Yes, sir.
October 7th at 7:15?
Don't we need to push them out a little more? I think we can do that.
On what basis? Just because legally we're obligated to continue it, whether they request it or not? Well, they did request to not, to not, they weren't prepared to present tonight. So they asked for continuation. It's up to us to, we must, we will continue them.
Either to a specified timing date, or to a specified timing date. Gretchen, what looks comfortable?
I have them on October 7th, 7:15. I don't know if that's comfortable for them, though.
I, I'd prefer that we push them out for the 21st.
Should we go to the...
What do we have on the 7th right now?
7th right now, we have Vonderlees, Berice, Rockledge, and then KPH2, and we do have a few new ones. We do have the three new ones that were going to be on the 21st for KPH2, but since that's not done, we can't do those anyway, so those are going to get bumped in.
Why do we...
So the 21st is Cuffner, Delu, Berice, if they could continue, Mansor, and Grassmere.
Let's, let's move KPH2 to the 21st.
So KPH2 to the October 21st?
Yeah.
Well, when it's worth, I'll be away on the 21st, so...
I'll be away on the 7th.
So what time are we going to put them on there?
At least you're going to get donuts.
Because Grassmere is at 7:15?
Yeah, I get both. I get donuts.
Yeah, I know.
Should we put them on at 7:05? Should we put them on at 7:05?
That sounds good, yeah.
It's way ahead of schedule. And Grassmere.
July 21st.
But I believe the 21st, I will be out on the. I'm going to make my first one, I have them for 7:15.
If we don't have a board, then.
You got three members on your board that are missing.
Yeah.
Who's missing?
For the 21st?
No, no, no.
No, she's off the 7th. She's, she's there on October.
So it's just a confirmation with Edna then that she won't.
Yeah, she will be good.
Make sure the rest of you show up.
I'm not going anywhere.
Do we need a motion to do?
October 21st at 7:05.
Your motion approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I think I need, I want to explain something that happened today before we break up. Often, don't you think it should be?
Is that something you, Gretchen?
No?
I don't think.
No? Okay. I'm going to have a motion to, to close, and then I will.
Sure.
I hear a motion? Second, you want?
Motion. Closing the public.
We turn.
Okay.